This conference will now be recorded.
So, let's do, let's do this. Let's see how this works. Hi, Don. Can you hear me?
Yes, I was just turning my mic on. Hi, how are you?
Okay, is this better than last night?
Yes, I can hear perfectly.
Okay. We're using my laptop, so there are hula girls dancing on the corners, you know, it's coming from me, not, not this town. No, it's good. All right, so since it's, since it is six o'clock, past six o'clock, we're gonna open up the the Thursday, August 19th, meeting of Monterey Select Board. The agenda for this meeting is very specific. However, the board voted to put a few things on at the end. So, so the first, we're going to be doing a interview with legal services. We've got three interviews scheduled, and so we have with us right now Jeremiah Pollard, who is a current town council. And basically, we're going to him. I'm sorry, he's right behind everybody. Because we don't have a camera that faces that way. So, you'll just let us know if you can hear him, or if you can't. And then we'll, we can move him closer if we, if we have. Um. Alright, so welcome, welcome Jeremiah. Um. Why don't you give us just a brief overview of your service to Monterey?
Steven, who's at the meeting? I can't see anybody.
I'm very sorry. Okay, so you've got the three select board members, myself, Stephen Weiss chair, Justin Maycock.
John Lengel.
We're all here, we're all here physically, and then you have just Jeremiah Pollard in the, in the audience. Melissa's in a bunker somewhere else. Okay?
Can you turn the film on?
Can I turn my what on?
The film, so we can see you.
Oh, look at this.
And Justin.
Yeah, 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 excuse me. On camera.
I can actually.
Alright, so we're, we're social distancing a little bit over here. So, maybe Justin will turn on his camera.
Yeah.
And we'll do a cross, we'll do a cross thing, we'll have, we'll have two. So, we're, we're getting there, sorry. Together in 1847, and technology exists right around that time. Hold on, we're just waiting for Justin to, alright, well, while Justin is addressing his, his laptop, Jeremiah, I want you, I want you to go ahead, start.
Sure, okay. Well, I've been counsel for 17 years, so I've been doing this work for a long time, the town, the boards, the way the town operates. You know, I've done everything from the, you know, the engine outs of, of contracts, everything. Provided forms. Doing litigation in the zoning board. Right, and Superior Court. Can people hear me?
Yeah, can you, can you hear Justin, can you hear Jeremiah? Okay.
Okay, so, um. Yeah, I stand by my work, I don't know that I've ever, ever lost a case in Superior Court that I've taken from town so far. Luckily, there haven't been a lot of them, there's been a lot more litigation lately, obviously. So, if you're looking at last year the fees that, that we did for litigation, they were probably higher than they've been in past years because of primarily the Hume case and the Steinberg case. So, those, those are both win court cases. Luckily, I'm not driving to Boston for those cases, and it doesn't look like that's gonna change in the future. So, let's, let's save some costs for the town. Other than that, you know, it's been a good working relationship, I've gone through a lot of select boards, obviously, there's been some some conflict through the years, and that, that happens in towns. And ebbs and flows, so here we are.
I have one question to start off. Obviously, Monterey, for most of the time you served, had a board of select, or a select board. And now we have a town administrator system with the select board overseeing the town administrator. What do you think? I mean, I would imagine it's how we currently do it, but what do you think are, you know, is your advice method of contacting of a town, like Monterey contacting you when they have a select board and a town administrator who works on this select board, and from our end, how have we been performing compared to how you would like us to perform in that regard? And like, what are your expectations as to who should be contacted?
Well, when, when you're dealing with a town manager or an administrator, typically, that's who town council is, is dealing with in terms of a contact point. That having been said, it always has to be authorized by the select board. And that's something that, that whoever your council is, is not gonna be auditing. They're not gonna be, not gonna be making sure that questions coming to them from your manager, a town administrator, you're authorized by the select board. And that's just a function of who, who's in charge, right? It's the executive board, which is the select board, so I have in cases made sure that that's the case specifically when I'm aware that there might be a kind of a split between the select board, which has happened in years past. Handle that the best I can, but I know who my boss is, and it's the select. And then, the, when, when we did the interviews for that Collins report and what have you, that's a lot, we talked about that a lot. Maybe in the report, but it's, you know, select boards are, they're, it's not a full-time job, most of the select board members in all my towns have jobs, so you need someone to kind of be a conduit for a contact point, and it's, it's, issues have arisen in the past, that's why there was a policy enacted some time ago about how to use town council, because everyone was, everyone was just contacting.
Right.
So, we, we kind of narrowed the channel of how that happens, it's, it's board, it's board heads and chairs and the if it affects the select board, they have to go through the select board first, I think is a decent policy.
Although, we recently amended it apparently to allow select board members to contact you directly. And how is that, how has that worked?
It's fine. I mean, as, as long as I'm, there's not any type of serial polling or two people contacting at once and select board members involved. And I'll pick up the phone. And I'm usually at my office, except when I'm in court.
Right.
Like today.
Right.
What education have you completed in the last three years regarding municipal law?
What education have I completed?
Yeah, continuing legal education have you completed?
I, I don't do continuing legal education for municipal law.
Why is that?
Because I'm in court. Actually doing the cases.
Okay, are you a member of the Massachusetts Municipal Lawyers Association?
I'm a member, I get the publications from MADA.
What's MADA?
It's a it's, it's, they do all the releases, they do synopses of changes in the law, things like the municipal when they change finance laws, when they do the Modernization Act, whatever it is, you get their you get notices of, of what's been changed.
Do you know what the Massachusetts Municipal Lawyers Association is?
Yeah, I guess so.
But you're not a member?
No, I'm not a member.
Is there a reason you're not a member of that organization?
It's not something that ever, ever has come up.
Have you ever taken any classes offered by Copeland Page about municipal law?
No.
Do you feel that you, that your performance? But, so you, you've mentioned that you, that you've won you've, you have a winning record with, with the suit said that?
The cases that have been in Superior Court, which have been primarily ZDA appeals, one was done. Like fuel, one was there was, you know, there's two of them actually down at Lakeview, and this, I took those to court. They both came back, the board's decisions were affirmed, and the cases I have now, I don't have a decision yet.
Right.
That's Hume, that's pending, we just did the final arguments in that last week. And then, the, the other case is Steinberg, Train, and Monk, that is, that's gonna be November, it's trying in November, trial begins.
Okay, so, so this trial, that trial begins in November, and then I'm sorry to pre, the, the Hume the Hume action is, oh, that's already up for decision?
It's, we did five, we did arguments on, closing arguments on last weekend, 16.
Sixteenth to the 12th?
That was the 12th. You're right, it was the 12th, yep.
And we're gonna get a progress report on that, or?
Or no? Well, it's either decision or no, isn't it?
I don't know, what would you want for progress report?
How it went, what the argument was?
I gave you my brief.
That's what the argument was?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I did request for findings and rulings of law, that's what I argued. The only thing, thing that I added in the argument, having reviewed the transcripts again, was the fact that there were a couple more items there that were, I argued were recreational, like they have a ropes course up there that they charge a fee for. And some other things, they, they, they have shops that they charge for, I added that to the oral argument in addition to what you read in the brief.
Okay.
I mean, I can do something if the board wants me to, I can write something else, so.
We haven't had a discussion about it.
Yeah.
So, uh I, I personally, I'm satisfied with the progress, I mean, obviously, it's up to the the judge to make a determination. I, I can say that while I have had questions, you've certainly answered them for me, or concerns. Do you know if any of the lawyers, so, so when you won the cases against the other attorneys, do you know whether they were members of the Massachusetts Municipal Association? I just wanted to know what the playing field was.
You could, you can sign up, be a member of whatever you want, you can be a member of the Massas- Massachusetts Association of Trial Attorneys.
Right.
It's, those are, I'm a member of that. I've been a trial lawyer for 21 years, so I mean, why go to courses when you're in court? I've done 27, 28 appeals, I've been in front of the SJC three times. A lot of lawyers go their whole careers and never argue in front of the SJC once.
Right.
I've been in front of the First Circuit Court of Appeals. I was in front of the First Circuit Court of Appeals in a case that created law about the moderator's powers and Jeremiah. That was the current case.
What county, what towns are you currently servicing in, in in Berkshire County?
Yeah, Lee, New Marlboro, Monterey. Um, Tonne, technically isn't Berkshire, but it's so close.
Well, yeah.
Otis. Washington. I said New Marlboro.
Yeah.
Nega-Ma.
Okay, anything else? I answered every question I had, I don't know if anyone in the public has any questions or if we want to. Anybody in the public have any questions? It looks like it's asleep.
Aren't there gonna be questions about what rates these attorneys are gonna charge? And how they're gonna bill?
Well, we have, we have, if you're at my number, that was a number that, that was approved from a town meeting.
Well, I also gave an hour. Alright. Asked me to give an hourly as well.
Okay, and so that number was?
Hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty, hourly, and?
Hundred and eighty hourly.
Yeah, and seven, was it seventeen? Seventeen thousand, or?
I have a question, Steve, if we're gonna discuss rates. When Mr. Pollard is billing outside of his contract, when he's in trial or it's hourly. How are his bills itemized, and how are they broken down? To show what he's worked on and how much time he spent on it, does he send things like that? Like, what do the bills look like?
Itemize the time, I have a great work, what I did.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen his legal bills, they don't look out of the ordinary.
And in what time increments are they billed?
Point one. Ten-minute increments.
Any other?
And you, and you've seen those, are those public record?
I think they are. I'm not certain.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not certain.
The details are.
Yeah, I'm not certain.
Some of the details that they get, the more detailed the bill, the more likely there's something confidential.
Right.
I don't know about that, I've looked at lawyers, that it's very detailed, nothing's confidential, it just says when they worked on it, who it was they worked on, and for how long, so I don't know how that would be confidential. I'm just curious to see what they look like, and how it's billed. Thank you.
It's fine. Anybody else have a question out there? Don's traveling from room to room.
I have another question. My understanding, you had a meeting with Steve Weiss, the chief and town administrator, is that true?
No.
Recently? Did you speak to them?
No. No, I didn't.
Alright.
What, I got a question for you, where did you get that from?
Yeah.
I got that from a document I just received today.
That document, whatever, whatever, whoever said that, that's not true.
So, you didn't have any input into a issue that's going on in town hall, that you didn't advise the select board on? Or just you advised Mr. Weiss on?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
All I need to know?
Okay. Um. Thank you very much, alright.
Would you like me to clarify any of that?
Sure.
There's nothing in there that says Jeremiah met with myself and the chief and Steve. He spoke to the chief on the phone about a recent incident, but that's it. Something in here says that he met with us? Completely false, and there slipped something in there, or?
I don't slip things in the documents, I just got it today.
Is it in the document?
I've seen it. Oh wait, my question was answered, that's fine.
Well, I did, I didn't.
Okay, good.
Okay, um, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Alright.
Good night.
Good night.
Night, Jeremiah, thank you.
Melissa, we got five minutes, can you bring in the, can you bring in that permit?
Oh.
Can we all get this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just bring it, since, since we have the time. I'd like to get this, this out of the way over here, because Justin had to recuse himself, Bidwell, the Bidwell House is doing a is doing a gala, I moved that we approved their, their permit for one day alcohol permit.
Yes.
Yes. Seconded, you seconded it, and you agreed.
Why did you refuse?
I'm getting, well, the Bidwell House offered to pay me for that event. Oh. And there. Without that. Thank you very much. Yes, why not?
Listen to each other.
Oh, yes.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. By the way, I've got both the socks.
Nice to meet you. Put the chair right here.
Okay, so, welcome to Monterey. First time here?
It's the first time here, I've been to Terryham, because, so, there's a woman named Mary Hale.
You mean the lady?
Mary Hale was very big in MMA, she had it at one point.
Right.
She was terrific and a good friend, and we did a lot of things together. So, I took a look at communities that I represented here, at one point. Lee Barrington, Washington, Williamstown, West Stockbridge, Hinsdale, Blue Dolphin, New Ashford, Foxborough, and Florida.
Nice. Okay, so, this is, I don't know if you know who we are, but I'm, my name is Stephen Weiss, I'm the chair of Monterey Select Board, Justin Maycock.
Attorney John Lengel, nice to meet you.
Um. So, 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 welcome, welcome to Monterey. Um.
Gentleman's name?
Leonard Kopelman? Right?
Leonard Kopelman.
Kopelman, I apologize. Oh, people mispronounce my name all the time, Kopelman, Mr. Kopelman.
That's you right there, isn't it? Kopelman and Page, PC.
Yeah, I wrote that.
It's very, oh, the new copies, the old copy was very dog-eared, so I'm glad we put up a new copy of them. So, this is interesting, so, um, and I don't under, I don't understand, so you, you founded Kopelman and Page?
I started Kopelman and Page, myself, and then they brought in Don Page's apartment, who was a real estate specialist. And he helped keep my bad habit of doing towns growing, because he was doing real estate transactions, and he, he made, I did a lot of work, but he was bringing in enough money to keep us going. And we grew the firm.
Right.
And, and when I left, they had about 130 on towns and cities. And Donald passed away, and and I was doing it, and I had no problem, although the problem I found was I was spending too much time managing as opposed to getting down in the towns, which is what I like doing. And they, they got nervous, what happens if the bus hit me? And the, the rest of the partners, principals.
Hey, I don't understand.
They, well, Donald and I were the only two stockholders.
Right.
And they, we did call them principals, so it's like a partnership, which we, we never did anything against the partnership, in other words, we always bring important things to them and see what they thought. But they were concerned, because they thought it was well-run, and everything was going well, what if the bus hit me and I, I get killed?
Oh, okay, I thought the bus actually hit you.
So, that, that being said, they wanted to take over, and, and I decided that, you know, it was time. And they asked me if I wanted to be on the management committee, and I said, no, I, I think, so long as you keep two or three of the five, we had a five-person committee, so long as you keep two or three of them, you don't need me, I, I always joked with them, and I said, going to meetings is where you take minutes and waste hours, and I apologize for that to you.
You guys work hard, sure, the exception, work hard, so all the select can do.
They deserve a medal for bringing up with the So, what happened is eventually that it was taken over, the group took over, and I promised to stay here to train them, manage them, I did. And then I decided to wrap it up. And then I was getting some complaints, people, and I would call them up and tell them how to handle it, what to do. And one was very, one town was very upset, and I had to refer them to another couple of firms.
Why were they upset of it? Can we?
They weren't upset of me, they were upset of the firm.
Your old firm?
My old firm. All due respect, and I, I love the managing partner, she's terrific, she is a fabulous municipal lawyer. But she had never been the managing, she wasn't even on the managing committee, I let them choose what they wanted to do, so it fell by the cracks, and then they said, they interviewed two firms, and they said, what'll it take to get you? And it was my first client, so I felt sort of like, maybe I should go back, and I hired a couple people who were unhappy there and left, and it worked out well, we got everything done, and it was really good. And then I just, you know, was at MMA meetings, to give courses sometime at a time, and Paul Durensis got hold of me. And Paul was with a firm that at one point was bigger than our firm in the municipal law, it was a different name, but his name was in it. And he's a terrific lawyer, been a selectman of Sherburne for 30 years.
30 years.
He likes punishment.
Yeah, sure does.
And and so, and it was, the labor lawyer was a selectman in acting, so, I mean, they really care about cities and towns. You have to in this business, you, you know yourselves how much time you put into it, and you have to put up with. And you're not even paid. So, the, so that's what happened, so I, I went with them, and and what intrigued me about your town was that West, excuse me, New Braintree, was a small town, when I applied to them about three years ago, they had a little over 1,000 people, now they have a little under 1,000. And they had KP. And when I interviewed, I said, why, what happened? I said, I mean, I, you know, I know the people, the people. Said, we have this woman, Jackie, she became a judge, I said, yeah, I know her, she's terrific. But I'm sorry, they gave it to somebody else, yeah, but we, we can't get opinions out of them. It takes weeks, and then they call up and they don't put it in writing, and it's just horrible, you just, you can't stand it, we don't want it. So, I said, well, I'll, you know, gave them my sense of how it should be done, and they said, look, they're still town council till June 30th, is there any way you could take over? I was in short, this.
How long ago was that?
That was about two, a little over two years ago. And they, Randy Walker, is, I think, still is the chairman, Randy Walker in, in New Braintree, and I know they're very happy with me, and I, I, I'm able to do a lot of things quickly for them, I get back the same day, and they talk to their they, they don't have a town administrator, but she's like, like an and, and she left, actually, so the town, I think the town accountant is working from, helping out, but we take care of everything. So, this, I know, I saw the thing you put out for the amount of money you spent, and it blew me away.
How much?
A hell of a lot of money.
How much?
This was, we, the town's budget for 22, the council, 17,000, with an additional 7,500 for litigation fees and expenses. This was, we, the town's budget for twenty-two, the council seventeen thousand, with an additional seventy-five hundred for litigation fees and expenses. I think I charged New Braintree, you can ask them, but I, I think I charged New Braintree, other than cleaning up some stuff that they hadn't worked on. Probably about fifteen hundred each of the two past years. So, how do I do it?
Yeah.
Well, I said to them, let's talk about town meeting. And I said, you know, if you have issues, call me, and I don't want to charge by a tenth of an hour, it is painful, to go put it down, view it, and all that crap, but this is not, not me.
Do you peer at town meetings, do you go do?
I do in some towns, but with them, I, I suggested to them that, I will do your town, and they're in the far western part of Liston County, they're not too far away from you, but they're not close. So, I said, I'll be glad to do it, and I'll do it free, call me all night long if you want, and I'll give you, they never called, there's no charge. And we tried to prepare, I, the, the last town meeting I did was Cohasset, Cohasset has several thousand people, it's on the water. And I went to the town meeting, but they were well-prepared ahead of time, and the town meeting lasted, and it's a much bigger town, it was several thousands of people, and complex, so short, and it lasted about two and a half hours, two and a half hours.
The whole town meeting lasted two and a half hours?
They asked zero questions, we had it really well-prepared, and everything was fine. So, you can call them up, and it's, and in fact, they asked me how long I thought it was going to be, it was the first town meeting I'd done for them, so, and I thought it was two hundred, and I was dead wrong.
Yeah, our town meeting took two days.
So, we understand, it was continued.
Correct.
And, you know, it's fine, I mean, I can handle it, but I mean, it's just, it's, you're paid for, and I try, I try to think, I don't get jollys out of building towns, I honestly don't. I might get jollys out of having clients happy with what we do, coming up with good ideas that solve problems. And I always say to clients, if you don't ask me these two questions, I'm going to ask them, and the first question is, what's my likelihood of success? And your likelihood of success is anywhere from, you know, five percent to ninety-five percent, no one can guarantee success, but you, you know pretty well. And the second question is, and you can judge me by it, because I will tell you. And, and then the second question is, what'll it cost me to get to that point? And I'm pretty good at, I've been around the court system long enough to have a sense of how much it costs for these things. So, it's a practical matter, I try to figure out, if this were my case, personally, what would I do to try to get rid of it, how do you get rid of it? What's an honest, fair disposition of it? So, and then at least let, let you know, so you at least have the, you know what the likelihood of success is, you know what the cost is, and, you have heard a potential way of getting out of it, and you make the decision, tell me what to do, whether you want me to try to negotiate that. I don't go off half-cocked.
So, the client makes the decision, you give them the options and?
I do not make any decisions.
Okay.
And that's why, I respect you folks, you're stuck.
I'm glad you said that.
You can blame it on Town Council, it's a little Town Council, but, it's a, no, only the client can make this, first of all, it's against the rules, ethics rules, it's only the client can make that.
Right. What's the arrangement, the of council arrangement, which, which, what, there's four, I guess, of council arrangements according to the ABA, which one are you?
According to.
You're, aren't you of council of the firm?
Oh, yeah, I'm of council, it's, it's my arrangement, I have, I share an office with Paul Durensis, who's the main partner, one of the managing team partners, and I share, literally share an office, if you walk into the office, it's a reasonably large office, and I have my own computer, he has his own computer, I have my own phone, he has his phone, we share, we share a desk, and, because he's rarely in. He has a lot of big council, he's always out and doing things, and I'm not in that much, I mean, I'm where it's neat, where I'm needed, and trying to figure things out, how to get stuff done, so, it works out well, so, off council to me is that, I'm not a, I'm not a partner, or do I want to be one, and I'm not a full-time employee, I come, I consider myself on duty full-time, but I don't want to, no one's going to tell me what to do, but we've never had a problem, I've been there three years, three, four years, and it's been zero problem, in fact, they called me up to ask me what to do.
Where, where's your firm physically located, where are you, where's your office?
On Franklin Street.
Where?
On Franklin Street.
In?
In downtown Boston.
In downtown Boston.
So, what, what's the value of that? You know, I, I wonder about that myself, and whether that's going to be a thing of the future, as people have learned to deal with at homes. And when I was doing Stoughton, I had one of the lawyers worked from his home, and it was perfect, and he came and saw me twice, but not just to discuss issues downtown, but it was fine. But the value for any given town is that we're right within walking distance, ten minute walk, to have a tax board, to all of the boards, the government, anything that's needed, so you don't pay for that, you don't charge going to those areas, I mean, you have a federal court here in Springfield, but some of them get brought, cases are brought here.
I know, but in Boston. Boston. You wanted to have a super, super secret meeting between you and the police chief and Melissa, I'd have to go all the way to Boston.
Oh, I could arrange, I could arrange some other place.
Okay.
Be much more enjoyable.
We could meet in the mall, somewhere around Springfield.
No.
Are you, so, okay, so, so basically, you're receiving all your questions by telephone or email?
That's correct.
Okay, and we, so the, the board has modified, there used to be an agreement where only the chair, this before we had Town Administrator, that would be, would reach out to legal counsel, and then the chairs of the other boards would, but now we, we've modified that, so anybody from the select board can contact you, or the Town Administrator to ask you questions, do you have that similar arrangement with other, with other towns, how does?
I, I, I don't even know, but I have no problem with that. Because I, I think this, each selectman, especially in this, this three, as opposed to five, may have a different perspective, and it's how you ask the question, and I think it's helpful to let council know the pros and cons. And it's not that you don't trust the chair, or don't trust so-and-so, or you could rotate it if you wanted to, but it, and there's nothing wrong with it, I mean, I, you know, for a quick phone call, I'd rather write it down. And I, I think I probably wouldn't anyway, because if the, if I had learned something that, that doesn't relate to the case, but it's negative, I just don't, it's no one's business. So, I mean, I want to get the biggest, best handle I can to prevent litigation.
Right.
But I don't want to tell you what to do, but somebody may say, have you seen this sort of thing before, do you have any experience of it now? I may just refer you to somebody I know from a different town that has done that, and see what you can.
Do you, do you know that, that we're in, under, we're currently in litigation on two, well, two issues through, through Town Council currently, and, and one through it, through another council?
Yeah, I, I understand that more, I repeat, yeah. And, I mean, there's, there's two ways to handle that, one way is to have new Town Council take it over, and the other way is to let the old Town Council complete it, but I mean, that's the decision of the board.
That's our decision. That's our decision.
Yeah, so does it.
I, I'm curious, so, what would you, I mean, I, I understand that it might be a self-serving question, and I apologize, but what would your recommendation, recommendation be, since you've obviously been in this business for?
I, I haven't looked at the cases, and I don't know how far they are. So, my sense is, is the board, does the majority of the board have confidence that whoever, assuming our, or another firm became council, that the existing Town Council can complete it or discomp?
That's a very good lawyerly response.
No, I mean, I don't have.
No, that's okay, that's all right.
I'm not looking to make money, but to give me the cases.
It's a fair, it's a fair response.
The last thing I want to do is, the last thing I want to do is to be your counsel and have the litigation with somebody else, and the expense way up there, and I get, I get the tarnish.
No, no, I, and I thought, you just mentioned that you, you always want to get the best, the chance for success, I mean, I guess any attorney would want.
You know, what you could do is call, call a Town Council in and say, you know, what's, what's happening, and what's, you're going executive session, what's the likelihood of success? What, what have you done to get rid of it, what's it going to cost to go forward, what's your, what's your strategy, is there anything you can do? And all sorts of stuff like that, you become the lawyers and ask the questions.
Can I ask, when you started the old firm, the emphasis was on education, I noticed, is that true? I mean.
Yeah, very much, I ran courses. Come to, to courses, I was once, I was from the Northampton.
Okay.
I was novice in Northampton, I hired, Table TV was coming in, and there was a guy named Ed Riley, and Ed Riley became chair of that committee, and I got to know him well, and I really liked him a lot. And Ed was very bright, and he decided not to run from there, and I said to him, I would like to open up an office in Pittsfield, would you do it for me? So, he did, you know, and he was this fellow, who was in that office, he didn't have that much work, and in fact, KP Law uses a woman.
Oh, yeah.
Jen is terrific, although I spoke to her, and she basically.
Because they have the E updates, they have KP Law knowledge base, and they have, you know, public records, law database, do you have any of that?
I do.
I mean, on your website, you, you have, no?
No, I mean, I said, depending on what the town needs, I will get it for them.
What's your feeling about?
Train, I do training, I do training programs, which is what I'm going to go back to doing, I did some of the, many of them for the Massachusetts Municipal Association. I wrote the original one, so.
It'd be very helpful.
What's the Massachusetts Municipal Lawyers Association, do you know anything about that?
Yeah, it's, I, I would give them money to see, because I, to, but it's, it doesn't do anything, you know, the last name, the last name I meant, they went to, they just have a form.
So, there's no education or anything?
No, there's nothing like that.
Is it fair to say KP Law now does the majority of the education in the state regarding municipal law?
Do they do the majority of it, they probably do.
Yeah.
They probably do. That was a, I think it's important to be up to date, if there's a new law that comes out, Paul and I will analyze it fairly well, so what it, what it means to our clients, in general.
Do you give updates to your clients on the?
And we'll send it out.
Yeah.
We want to, you know, be, now practice for us, knowing you had a type of issue, and not sending the information about it. And we'd be weird, it's, you know, especially if you found out from somebody else, I'd feel very comfortable. But it inundate you with everything. Unless you all want to become Town Councils.
Absolutely not.
I do not want to be a selectman.
Right, exactly.
So, we have, we have a good understanding here.
Have you, I'm sorry, just, do you have a question?
Yeah, so, Monterey recently adopted a Town Administrator, former government.
I saw that.
What, have you worked with town, well, you've probably worked with towns with Town Administrators and, and, and select boards, and how do you advise that we communicate to a Town Council in that kind of system?
It's usually a good idea to have it go through one source, especially if you have an administrator or manager, and even executive secretaries. It usually goes through that person, so they're the keeper of all the records and everything, know what time, date, they, they call the Town Council, such, such a date, such, still told us, and, I think it's derogatory. Join the Town Council. You should vote to refer it, something the Town Council's brought an opinion, something to that.
What's your policy on issuing legal opinions, are they in writing, are they verbal?
Both. I mean, if it's something that's, if you need right away, I'd probably give it to you verbally, and if it's something that, it's important that you have about this, the, 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 I don't factor in my just email. But I, I basically would tell you on the phone, discuss it with you, an email, something. But, no, I don't, I don't want to make a, I just don't think it's smart.
I think you might not have a choice.
I think you should rely on counsel to help you get rid of litigation, get rid of people that are still dependent on lawyers, and try, you know, get with the center.
So, well, I, as a non-lawyer, I can appreciate where you're coming from, because I, I think, I don't think that, you know, litigation, you know, solves much, however, just recently, Mr. Wiegand over here filed a lawsuit against the town, myself, a Town Administrator, former select board member, and his wife, and one other individual, trying to standing that, was ultimately dismissed, but how does, how do you work in a world where, have you, have you had experience of select board members suing other select board members?
Actually belting each other.
What?
One town in the North Shore.
Oh, well. Things, things occurred, yeah, well, yeah, I, I mean, obviously, times have changed.
You know, what I'd want to do is to try to talk to any selectman, and try to talk about, how to deal with the key cases, these things are really important, and how to get along on things that are less than. But that's the way I am, I think it's, I can, because you guys put a lot of time and effort, and you don't get paid, and you take a lot of heat.
I pay a $4,000, close to $5,000 a year. I know. Believe me, it goes, goes right to, who's an ant asset.
But I mean, you know, they, you have the opportunity, the sport, especially in, in, college, sort of, when the real people come in, to let them know what's going on, let them know, you know, one selectman's unhappy with two or one or the other, let them know and let them know.
We have a, we have a question from the audience. Coburn?
It may have been, it may have been answered, it's a little hard to hear, but I would like you to state clearly, if you haven't, what hourly rate, what's your hourly rate, what hourly rate would you charge Monterey? Are you proposing a retainer, an annual retainer, and how much of an annual retainer are you proposing?
Those are very good questions, and I, and they were asked basically in the RFP, and I responded to that, and what I responded is, that I don't work on a retainer basis, and that we charge $200 an hour, but if it's under a quarter of an hour, it just, it's not worth the effort, I just let it go. So, I do a lot of work, I think, I think ninety percent of the stuff I did for Royal Stenders, just get the charge. So, that's what it is, and you, and it's, and it's a fair rate, and it's a rate that hopefully is high enough to discourage people from just bringing suits.
Um, but, so I guess the challenge is, I, I don't know how they work it in Cohasset or New Braintree, so we, we have to raise and appropriate.
Representation of the contract because the contract provides majority vote if dismissal for cause. And unanimous vote only if there's no cause for the dismissal.
One of the drafters of the hypothetical contract. It doesn't really apply to Monterey, but it might.
Don, what are you talk- Don, what is Don talking about? That he's saying something?
I think everybody's made their point. Um, I, I don't want to, I don't want to leave Mr. Kulpman on a sour note. I still want him, his toast happening as he goes out the door.
Hope you're staying overnight. The long ride back.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm glad to meet you and I, I would, I would love to see you guys to be on so well and fool the public. And, and work these things out and I'll, I'll help the best I can. I mean, you know, you may think that one of the selectmen's off the wall or something and maybe, maybe person isn't, I don't know. I'm not going to make a judgment for you, but I'll try to my best to make the best arguments on both sides. So then you can come to a, um, inappropriate decision for yourself. I don't make decisions here.
I, I personally appreciate your philosophy, but anyway, um, terrific. Okay. So very much okay. Thank you, sir. Just go out if you'd like.
Thank you. Safe trip back.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you. Don't speed. Oh. Yeah, Lauren's on here. I just saw her pop on. Maybe we should, uh, just pop on, move it back. Yeah, I think she probably.
What do you want to move it? Oh, move it all the way back? Yeah.
Okay.
It is it, is that fine?
Yep. Hello, Lauren.
Hi. Hi. Nice to see you all or see some of you. Do you want to take a few minutes before? I know you just finished up.
Actually, could I get one minute to just grab some water?
Come.
That'd be perfect, I guess. Hey, everybody. You can see, oh, you can't see. All right, Justin's just gonna pop on so you can see him as well. And, and then we'll get, and we'll get going. Uh, while he's trying, while he's logging on, um, welcome to Monterey Select Board. Uh, my name is Stephen Weiss. I'm the chair. Um, you have Justin Maycock, Justin Maycook.
John Wingo.
And John Wingo. We're all here at Town Hall. I got a few people logging in. Is it, is it okay to start? Okay. So, uh, are you, are you muted? No. Can you, can you hear me? Oh, you're there.
Yeah, I can hear.
Okay. Um, so, okay, so, uh, so we're, uh, we're talking to, uh, folks for, uh, provide legal services and I understand that you've been, um, that you, uh, you, you're the compliment, uh, so KP Law, right? Um, not called a compliment, a page anymore.
No, no, KP Law.
Um, so why, let me just give a, a brief introduction, if you don't mind, and of the, of the company and, uh, and your role. I, I don't know, uh, I don't know what your role is in the company as well.
Certainly. Yep. My name is Lauren Goldberg and I'm actually the managing attorney and president at KP Law. Uh, we have been around for many years previously under the name of Kulpman and Page. And then since 20, well, the, the current ownership model since 2013, I have been the, um, the managing attorney since that time. Uh, we are essentially, um, created, staffed, organized to provide services to municipalities and other public entities. We do have, um, some private clients, but for the most part, uh, districts and, um, you know, counties and uh, other public agencies, um, as well as cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth. So, uh, this is what we do and, um, we, uh, we've come up with a, um, what we think is a great model to provide legal services and, uh, not only do each of us, act as municipal attorney or lead attorney for various, um, cities, towns and, and districts and housing authorities. But we also, uh, have areas where we really enjoy practicing or where we have, where we, uh, practice a lot. And hopefully those two things are the same. Um, we like to think of ourselves somewhat like, um, a town hall. You know, if you came to my office, you're coming to the clerk's office to talk about elections. If you go to, you know, my colleague, um, Brian Riley's office, who is proposed to serve as a, as a contact for you all. He's going to talk about open meeting, public records, conflict of interest law, alcohol beverage is licensing, licensing. Um, and Brian Mazer, who we had proposed for, uh, labor, Brian's specialty area is labor and employment. So each of us is both a general municipalist as well as practicing in a specialty area. Um, and the specialty areas, as I say, kind of looks like a town hall. If you, uh, we could hang little, little signs outside of our doors and each of us, um, specializes in that, in that area. Uh, we have essentially the most, um, significant client, municipal client base in the Commonwealth. And, uh, for that, um, we are in a wonderful position to take advantage of all of the information that we learn from holding, um, holding that position. And so, uh, while, while somebody always goes first, let's just say, um, we're talking about mask mandates, which are coming back in a huge way right now. Um, you know, we're, we're devoting the time to that. We've also been devoting time to that previously, so we knew that that was coming down the line. And then we're preparing a, um, you know, a kind of place to start for other attorneys and other communities, um, that are KP Law clients, uh, to provide you essentially with not reinventing the wheel, but providing you with the right, you know, the right policy or the right mandate for your community. The, the kind of heavy lifting over whether, um, you know, what, what the extent of the mask mandate can be, et cetera. We're learning that, um, every day and in that way I like to, um, say we're a lot like the MMA. We're hearing from, uh, communities across the state about the things that are the most important to them, about the things that are the biggest challenges. Uh, you know, we are dealing with the frustration of municipal officials with various new laws, um, trying to implement, uh, the, the COVID-19 laws, for example, and, and executive orders has been, you know, nearly a full-time project for a year. Uh, but we also do that in any time the law changes significantly. So for example, when the public records law changed a few years ago, we went around the state, uh, clients and non-clients and just provided training on the new public records law, what it was, how to prepare, how to implement. And, um, you know, as I said, we did that in a number of locations. We probably did about 25 seminars for both clients and non-clients alike. Um, and then with the open meeting law, which was at this point, you know, 11 years ago. Um, I would say, you know, we absolutely did, did the same thing. We wrote a series of memoranda, um, that were provided to clients addressing each area of the law that had changed and guidance as to how to, how to do that. So we think we save you money no matter what because we are always adding to our, um, knowledge and expertise. And we are not starting from scratch. Um, we're starting from a very well reasoned, well thought out, legally researched place. And that, the benefit of that, um, you know, endures to all of our clients individually, uh, as well as, as well as collectively. So, um, if, if you want me to go on, I'd be happy to, or I could answer your questions.
Uh, speaking of clients, who are your clients here in, uh, in Berkshire County? Which town?
Yep. Um, I just, I want to get the, um, I don't want to leave anyone out. So this one sec. And this information is also available on our website. Um, and we, um, we try to keep it updated in terms of who the clients are so that if there's an issue, um, where you're looking to get a recommendation or you have a question or you think, um, you know, that they, that you would be similar to a different community, it's a good place to take a look. Um, so, let's see. Uh, so in, in Berkshire County, we have Beckett and Clarksburg, Dalton in Florida, Great Barrington, Hinsdale, Lennox, Lanesboro, Mount Washington, New Ashford, North Adams, Peru, Sandisfield, Sheffield, West Stockbridge and Williamstown. So we represent a fair number of communities out there. Um, and, uh, you know, so, so we're hearing about the types of things that your area of the state is concerned about, you know, when they, when we start talking about, um, mask mandates, you know, it kind of went from city to Western Mass. And so we saw that kind of roll itself out, um, to your area as well. Uh, so we, we.
I think there are a lot of issues other than mask mandates that, that, that counts as size, uh, face. Especially if you represent, if you say you represent like Sandisfield, for example. I, I think there's, uh, you know, there's, there's certainly some issues. Where are you, where are you physically located? Where am I, uh, where's your office?
Well, I'm at home, um, which is where many of us are right now. Uh, we're not really in the office as much as previously. But we have offices in a number of places. We have one in Lennox. Uh, we have one in, excuse me, one in Worcester. We have one in Boston and then we have an office as well, um, in, um, Hyannis.
Okay.
And, and those are really landing spots for us where we have access to all of our, you know, technology and a, a place to work from and to, um, you know, be able to kind of function out of, especially during town meeting season. We might, you know, go into an office for several days in a row. If, you know, if there are town meetings that are all in a row out there, we wouldn't drive back and forth. We stay, um, and, you know, so that we're more available and not spending time driving.
Why do you provide attendance at town meetings?
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's, we, we go to nearly all the town meetings of the towns we represent.
And my, I was a little confused. You mentioned three people, yourself and the Brian, were there two Bryans?
Yeah, there are two Bryans. Brian squared. Um, Brian Riley, R I L E Y. And this is in the, um, proposal that I submitted and Brian Mazer, M A S E R. We, we like to have a, a small team, um, that's your team that works with you, who know your bylaws and what cases are pending and the goals and, and, um, you know, uh, and issues that you want to address. For example, sometimes a town will say, you know, we've had it with zoning violations and we are very interested in, you know, enforcing our zoning bylaws. Let's start here. So we might do that, um, in a specific way. And so your team, your small team would be knowledgeable about your goals and about what you're trying to accomplish. Um, if though, for example, let's say you had a tough election issue. Brian Riley might answer it because he also does election law or he might say, Lauren, can you get involved with this? And so we really try to bring the best person to do the work when we can. Um, and there's some things where there is no best person, where everyone is the best person. And, um, you know, so that as a, as a lead attorney, you would do it yourself. And, you know, let's say labor and employment, if, if, um, Brian Mazer was, uh, your lead contact for that. Brian does a lot of, um, collective bargaining, uh, grievances, you know, arbitrations, et cetera. And so he would likely do a, a significant part of that work himself. So.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I, I just, uh, um, because I, I think we're, you're answering my question, but you're getting, but, uh, I'm going to give you a little, uh, get you a little bit faster there. Um, I, so, so, uh, we generally reach out to town council. I don't know, on a weekly basis, sometimes there are matters on a daily basis. Um, how, um, who would we contact?
So, yeah, it's explained in the, in the proposal and that would be Brian Riley would be the person that you would contact with your day-to-day needs. I am always available to, to you as well. Um, but Brian is the person. So if you call Brian Riley and for any reason Brian Riley was not available, you could always follow up with Brian Mazer if you wanted to hear back that moment. And, you know, we, we would hope that one or the other would be available, you know, either by cell or in the office when, when you called. Um, but Brian Riley would be what we call the primary contact. He would, um, probably be the person that comes to town meeting. He would be the person that would work closely, um, with the town administrator and with the board, you know, managing pending litigation, uh, analyzing, you know, kind of the different policy decisions that come along to talk about risk, risk, um, risk analysis for those different, um, for those different matters. So helping to answer public records and conflict of interest law and open meeting law complaints.
How long has he been with, with, uh, KP?
Longer than me, so longer than 2000.
Longer than 2000, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know exactly how many, but longer than me.
Okay, I, I just, I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know.
Yeah.
Um, would you be coming into the town to giving, uh, some open meeting law training?
Yep, we do a few, a couple open meeting law, I mean, I'm sorry, a couple free trainings every year for every client. And there's a long list of all of the different, uh, trainings that we do on our website. And also I believe in the attachment to the letter that I had sent. Um, but yes, we do, uh, open meeting, public records and conflict of interest law training regularly throughout, throughout the Commonwealth in person on Zoom. Um, you know, maybe one in the afternoon with staff and one at night with board and committee members. Um, and if there was something else that you were interested in, you really felt it would be useful. For example, you know, how to hold a public hearing or how to draft a defensible decision. Or, um, you know, contracts and procurement, we are able to provide that as well. And we typically will not charge for that, um, unless you kind of get to a, a tipping point, a boiling point of over which it seems like we've been doing a ton, a ton of, of that. So usually we'll do two, a few more. Um, and again, you know, we're happy to do a couple sessions with those so that the people that need to know, both staff and board members have a chance to, um, to participate and, and ask questions.
I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't remember your responses for the, uh, what were the rates? Because some, it's going to get out, so.
Yes. Um, sorry, we, 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 um, proposed a single blended rate of $210 an hour through June of, June 30 of 2022. And then, um, we have our rate going up $10 each of the next two years if you were to bus for that period of time.
So, uh, did you, did you provide a, a retainer rate?
Um, well, there's a bit of a going around about the retainer rate. Um, we would only want to charge you what made sense. We don't want to pick a number out of a hat to propose a retainer. Um, we would typically sit down and discuss with you what you wanted to have covered in the retainer and what you wanted to pay for on an hourly basis. We would look at your past couple of years of legal bills to try to figure out where you spent your money. So we can give you some good advice on that. And then we would, um, you know, we would want to agree to a retainer that was 100% clear as to what's inside and what's outside so that you would have certainty and comfort. And so that we would have certainty and comfort because we're a business too. And we need to, you know, when we do retainers, they're not, they are intended to be kind of the, the, um, a guideline for a relationship. So we don't want, you know, you to think, oh, gee, I thought zoning board of appeals, comprehensive permit, you know, comprehensive permits were in the retainer. And I say, well, I didn't, you know, no, I don't think, so we want to make sure it's in writing. You know, and we know.
I, I think that's great. I, I, um, um, as you are aware, because you, you represent other towns, we raise and appropriate certain amount of money for legal expenses. Uh, and, um, have you been provided with that amount of money, uh, have, with those, with those numbers?
Um, I didn't see them. If I, if you did, I do know that, um, I, it's been a while and I probably should have looked before I got back on. But, um, if you just want to remind you, if you have it offhand.
Okay, it's 17, uh, the town raised appropriate $17,000 for, um, for retainer and I believe $7,500 for, um,
Litigation.
For litigation expenses. So, um, which would be obviously our guideline, um, uh, to, you know, to, to enact legal services. So, so am I, correct me if I'm wrong. So, um, so what you're saying is if those are the numbers that you would provide your company, not you personally.
No, I, it would be, I, I'm the, I'm, I'm the person who puts these, these things together and tries to, you know, make sure just from a business perspective that we're on the same page so that, you know, a year from now, we don't have to have a further discussion about it if, if there's any confusion. You know, I want to be able to point out where, what, what we agree to, just like I want you to be able to point out what we agreed to.
But so, so you would provide a comprehensive list of what you would do for that, essentially for that amount of money?
Yeah, um, we would, what I would do is kind of send you a list of things, let you all take a look at it. Um, talk about what you would like to be in the retainer and how you want that to work. Is there going to be a single point of contact? Is everything going to come through the town administrator? Uh, does the board, does the select board have a, um, you know, a access to council policy where permission has to be, um, granted in advance, um, you know, so, so we talk about those things. And then about any significant things that you would usually not, um, appropriate for in a retainer. Like for example, tax title work. We do tax title work outside of a retainer because ultimately that work provides our fee, so we don't do it inside the retainer. Um, if there's going to be, for example, um, a third party such as a developer that's going to be paying a consultant fee for the town, we would do that outside of the retainer because they're paying the fee. So we, um, you know, we, we want to make sure you, you, as I said, you know what's in it and what's not. Um, town meeting is usually in a retainer, um, and that is not just attending town meeting, but it's reviewing the warrant or drafting warrant articles, reviewing the warrant, drafting motions and doing a, you know, a, um, a pre-meeting frequently with the moderator and the, um, the finance committee chair, uh, chair of the select board, just to make sure, you know, what are we expecting? What kinds of things might come up at the last minute, uh, to make sure that the motions that were drafted still make sense and to, you know, troubleshoot any issues that we think could arise.
Right, okay. Um, we're currently, are you aware that town is currently involved in two lawsuits? Um, and, uh, well, three lawsuits actually, but two of them of utilizing town council?
Um, I, yes, I was told there was some litigation, um, you know, and, and we work with, um, former council a lot or special counsel a lot when communities do transition. Um, that's really, uh, a policy issue. And typically when we're talking about what makes sense to leave and what makes sense to move, it's really how much time and energy has already been invested? How, how far along is the matter? Um, as compared to, you know, if this just happened, then assigning to us from the start isn't going to wind up costing you any more than it would if you, um, you know, if you had, uh, given it first to someone else. And then we, so we wouldn't redo the work. It would be the first time we would be doing the work. So, um, and, and again, that's up to you. We are very comfortable, um, you know, throughout the Commonwealth, we work with a number of attorneys who are either a former city solicitor or a former town council or a special counsel that they've just used in a particular area for a long time. So we're, we're, we're very pleased to do that when asked and, and that's no problem.
Do I remember a different charge for staff staffing?
I'm sorry, say that again?
There are different charge for staff?
Yes. If a paralegal works on this, uh, works on something, then you only get charged half of the attorney rate. Um, and our regular staff, you wouldn't be charged for it all. So hypothetically, if one of our legal assistants were to, um, you know, type up minutes that we had or, you know, a draft of minutes that we had, you're not getting charged for the time that, that draft is being created from my terrible handwriting or someone else's. Um, so.
Okay. Um, uh, we have, uh, we have an active, um, HR, um, situation that may devolve into, um, uh, into lawsuits. Um, you are equipped to, uh, to handle these types of, these types of issues?
Yes, I, I mean, with, without, um, without undermining in any way all the other firms that practice labor and employment for municipalities in Massachusetts. We have the largest and the best, um, labor and employment department. And, uh, it is the, the number of hours that they have collectively spent negotiating contracts and, um, and, um, uh, dealing with grievances and arbitrations and helping update policies. I mean, it's, it's incredible. And Brian Mazer, who is provided, who was proposed as your labor and employment contact. So part of your very small legal team, he is the one who would manage those things. And he is brought in even in towns where, um, we aren't legal counsel to assist, uh, and we aren't town council to assist them with labor and employment matters.
Really?
And to do investigations. Yep. He, uh, he's, he's a very skilled attorney.
We have a, um, what is, what is, like, remember that vote against paying a legal bill? Um, how would, how would you handle that? General about legal bill?
A, a current legal bill or one from a previous fiscal year?
From a previous fiscal year.
So, um, we work pretty hard, as I'm sure you might imagine, for that not to happen. So, um, we issue our bills like by the middle of the month and, um, you know, we, we typically are paid by the end of the month. If we don't get paid on time, um, our executive director is actually, she'll reach right out and say, does the right person have the bill? Can I help you with this? And especially in the last month of the year, we, um, give you several options as to how you might like to do your billing. Um, you know, whether you want all of the time at the end of the month, which is, I'd say the least popular choice. People like to get the first two weeks, as soon as the first two weeks are over, then they get a week, the next week. And then they get the last week during the last week of the month. Um, and you have until the 15th of July to pay bills that you receive timely. So, um, you know, really we hope it doesn't happen. If it does, you know, we understand that to pay a bill of a prior fiscal year, never mind us selectmen, but we need town meeting to go ahead and approve it. And we understand that, um, you know, this is the business that we work in. And, uh, if we let things go to a point that we're, you know, we're having a significant overage, then it's a risk that we're taking. And, you know, to be perfectly frank about it, sometimes it's a risk we will take because a city or town cannot manage a situation without us. And we're about building relationships. We're about, you know, when we talk about towns or cities that we represent, we don't say, you know, the, da, 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 of, then it's not the city of this or the town of that. It's not even the name of the town. You know, the da-da-da of, then it's not the city of this or the town of that, it's not even the name of the town. It's we blah blah blah, because we really do see ourselves as partners. Um, and, and that's the only way that we see legal, legal counsel actually or town council actually working. So, we know, we know that, we know that the difficulties with bills from a prior fiscal year.
Okay, um, and speaking of difficulties, um, so we also have a, a. A select, selectman that sued, that, that has filed a lawsuit against the town, myself. Um, former select board member, his wife and consultant. Um, how, how does, how do you, how do you work something like that out?
Um, did the, I mean, I, I don't know much about the lawsuit. Um, I would say that if the lawsuit actually includes damages, a request for, for monetary damages. And that should get referred to insurance counsel and they would seek to provide counsel. For the, um, for the, the individual who, um, you know, has, has a potential financial interest in it. Such as, uh, you know, a selectman if a selectman sued, as well as a, uh, an attorney for the town itself. So, um, that's something that we would have to deal with. We do see that in many circumstances. It raises issues under the public records law, the open meeting law, conflict of interest law. Um, and just practically, it makes things very hard, um, to manage. But again, you know, we, before we would come to any meeting where we're going to be discussing litigation or litigation strategy. We would, one, want to make sure that the, um, meeting notice item was appropriate and sufficient. Because, uh, the AG looks at that very carefully, so that's number one. Number two, if there was going to be a discussion, um, uh, in executive session, we'd have to decide whether that. Um, executive session should be noticed by name stating the case name. Sometimes there's reasons why that isn't a good idea, but frequently it is. Um, and then, you know, having that meeting and executive session and the decisions about, um, you know. How, how to move forward and what kind of, uh, majority the board would like to see. And then finally, and I think this is really important, um, and, you know, maybe not perhaps in the situation that you're talking about. Because, uh, when the town is sued, it typically doesn't have an ability to just sit back. Um, it usually has to respond in some manner. As compared to whether the town wants to bring action against a person or, um, or someone, when you do have a choice. And so, you know, we want to talk about the cost, what we see as the potential cost for going forward with a particular issue. Um, we, we can't predict the future. If we could, um, I, even though I like my job a lot, I wouldn't be doing this job. Um, but, um, we do, you know, sometimes have a feeling, is it more than fifty percent? Is it less than fifty percent? Do we know of a case just like this? Um, what's the trend been in the cases that have looked at, you know, voter participation or something like that? Is there, is there a trend that's going to influence the way we think a judge might act? Um, and then, you know, we want you to think about all those things, the cost, the likelihood or potential for success on the merits. Um, the downside of trying to, um, you know, defend the town for something that. Uh, you, you may not think is too important or the, the upside of defending the town for something you don't think is too important. Because you feel like it's the principle and you have to. And we would talk about all of those issues. Um, you know, and that with every case and with every decision about how to kind of continue with the litigation.
Okay, well, um, the, one other thing, um, um, so I read an email where, where you, where. KP said that they were not interested in, in this position. Did I, did I read that correctly?
Um, yeah, I, what I had, um, heard that was that there was significant, I, I forget exactly, um, who. But I'd heard there was significant discussion and concern about, um, the, um. You know, the funding of this position and, you know, my perspective is we, we have a lot of respect for our cities and towns. We know what their legal budgets are. When we're hired, we sit down and we figure that out. And, um, you know, our goal is never to, um, I don't know, to, to. Do more work than would otherwise be necessary. We do the right amount of work. And, um, our business model doesn't work if we do too much work because cities and towns don't want to pay for that. Um, the value of the services we provide, the way that we get paid is through our rates. And so, um, it's somewhat, you know, I, I, I had not wanted to be in a position where we were starting off. Um, feeling like, uh, you know, the, the rate itself. Or, or the amount that we might charge for a particular, um, matter was already kind of being prejudged. Without understanding that the value of what we bring is more than just what it costs in the dollars. So, I just, I just wanted to make sure that you all wanted to hear from us. Because I wanted to make sure that, that you hadn't already decided in theory. That, um, you know, you didn't want to pay the rate that we were going to charge.
Well, so, so because we, because we had a town, each town meeting and because we budgeted. For, for the two numbers that I gave you, um, that's, you know. Uh, believe me, it's, it's sort of an interesting thing because, um, that is the money essentially that we have to work with.
Certainly.
My, um, I guess my, my concern always is, now, obviously, we can always have a special town meeting if we, if. You know, if there's, if there's additional funds are needed or whatever, but my, my, I, I guess my, my general concern is. Yeah, I don't know how fast that amount of money gets, you know, gets. Uh, eaten up, I mean, you, you, you did mention that obviously you're a business.
Yes.
Um, and so, but, uh, in, in, and again, I'm not an attorney, so please forgive me. But, um, but, uh, you know, in the, in the days of, of lawsuits, which seem, this Monterey's faced the most amount of lawsuits. In its entire history, okay? Um, and it's, it's a town of, of under a thousand people, um, uh, full-time resident. Um, so, so my concern, my personal concern is that, you know, are we going to, you know, do we have? You know, do we have thirty thousand dollars with the lawsuits, but we got seventeen, uh, you know, and, and seventy-five to work with? How does that, you know, how would a, a company like yours, um, provide a continuity of service? Um, because obviously we're never, we're not going to get to the point where we go to a, a court and again, forgive me, I'm going to talk to you like a layman here. But I'm not going to say, well, listen, the meter's up, so we're just not, you know, we're not.
Yeah, certainly, and that's a good question, although I will submit to you that every single town is in the same spot. Um, it's just on a different scale perhaps, but, um. What we hope, number one is it takes us less time because we're starting. From a better position of knowledge and experience, so that's number one. Um, number two, so meaning you might pay the, the hourly rate for something. But hopefully it's going to take us a much shorter amount of time than it would someone who would have to, you know, start from, from, um, step one. Uh, number two, uh, we very much believe in preventative lawyering. And so one of the things that we would be trying to, uh, assist with is essentially to. Figure out, well, why did, why do we have all these lawsuits? And I'm sure, you know, there's a lot more information and everyone else knows and I don't, and I'm not trying to raise any issues. But it's like, well, are there some things that we could do with our policies and procedures? Are there things we could do differently about the way our boards are meeting? Are there things that we could do differently in terms of, um, you know, providing some assistance at a different stage? Um, and not from us, but from you all to the, to the, um, to the, uh, people who. Um, you know, are, are disgruntled or, um, unhappy. And so, you know, again, it's a matter of working together as a team. Um, if you got sued by, by, you know, five different people on a land use matter. Um, litigation would definitely be outside of the, um, outside of the retainer. Because it's impossible to predict what's going to happen. Um, so, yes, we would, we would be trying to make our best, our best efforts to not go to, into litigation at all. Number one, um, unless, again, it was a priority for the board. And number two, uh, if we were going to get into litigation, we would want you to think very diffi- debt very closely and carefully. About what the, whether the cost, um, and this is any lawyer. And I don't care whether they're charging you on a flat rate or a retainer or anything, whether the cost is worth the potential risk and benefit. Or benefit, and each of those has to be weighed. Um, and yeah, if, if it, if it got to be the case that it was a thirty thousand dollars of, um, work. We're certainly going to ask, we're going to say, you know, we'd like you to hold a special town meeting. Um, or we'd like you to ask the finance committee for a reserve fund transfer. Obviously, this wasn't expected at the time you voted on the budget. But for us to, um, represent you in an appropriate manner, you know, we also need to, to get paid. So we would work with you to get that done.
Um, so what prompted you to jump back in? You sent that, that email?
Um, so my understanding was that it was not, uh, predetermined that that wouldn't be, um. That, that our rate was in itself was prohibitive and that, um, you know, we. I, I should at least, you know, kind of provide an opportunity to talk about what a retainer looks like. And why we wouldn't, um, start off with one that's, you know, not, um.
Where did you get that information from? I mean, who, who reached out to you?
Um, so, uh, a member of the selectman did.
I, I reached out to Lauren and spoke to her, because I felt there was a miscommunication. Okay, um, because I don't think that's what the board said during our, our meetings. I felt that there was a miscommunication and I just wanted to clear things up with why we were soliciting. I think mainly for the reasons you provided tonight, Steve, which is we're in a tough, or not, like you said, every town's in the same situation. But we appropriated a certain amount. And so we do have that, I think, legitimate concern about having a budget and. Uh, but we were not trying to let the cost be overly prohibitive, like the same reasons Lauren mentioned. And also, um, why they wouldn't provide a retainer. No one gave us a cold retainer, you know, other than the lawyer we already have with the agreement we already have. So I felt like there was a miscommunication, uh, on our part and just wanted to clear things up about what I think the board. Or at least where I, you know, where I was coming from. So, so have you had come, you, have you emailed conversations with other select board members, I guess? You haven't had an email conversation with me, have you?
No. No, I, I, I mean, I had sent this proposal, a proposal of this nature, maybe, um. I don't, I, I think maybe even a year ago, um, you know, in, in twenty twenty. Um, and there had been no action, um, and then I was asked to submit, um, again. And I did because, you know, we, we appreciate and enjoy working with towns. And obviously, that is what we like to do, and so, um, I reached back out. Um, I mean, I, I proposed, sent in a proposal, um, and then I did get an email from the, um, administrator as well. Um, you know, saying, where's your retainer, you know, re- resubmit a, a proposal. And that's really why it felt to me like it, that we'd already done that a number of times. Um, and so my, um, you know, my feeling was that. If I was really being asked to do it again, we already, we already said what we would do. And I didn't see that there was anything else really that I could say. Um, and, you know, I want, I wanted to, um, be clear that we. We are very much mindful of the obligation of, um. Communities to be caretakers for the expenditure of municipal funds. Um, you know, our, the, this, the great significant, uh, the great significant, uh, amount of our budget. Is funded through municipalities and public entities. Um, we have no ulterior motive, we're not on anyone's side. And I think that if you look at the number of years that we've represented clients, um, you, you would know that has to be true. Um, you know, boards, select boards turn over completely, new town managers come and go, and we're still there. Um, and, you know, it's because we don't, it's not our place to. Tell you what policies to institute, what policy decision to make. Um, you are the deciders on that, you were elected for that and you are in the best place to make that decision. But you also need the amount of information that will allow you to make an informed decision. And so we see that part as our job. And there are times, especially in the labor and employment context, where we will say, we don't think you can do that. And if you do, we think you're going to get sued, um, and, but still, we're not the, we're not the police. If you make that choice that you want to go forward and you understand what the risks are. And you're willing to pay the financial costs as well as the, you know, relationship costs in a small community. That's your decision. Once you make a decision, we will, you know, um, zealously represent your position. Because that's what we're supposed to do, um, you know, zealously advocate on behalf of a client. Um, I will say too, that one thing that people sometimes ask about is, well, how do I know that if I ask one question, uh, that a question? I'm going to get, you know, and I get this answer, that if I ask, if another person asks that question, that they're going to get, they're the same answer. Are they going to get a different answer? And our response to that is, we think that's very important, especially in small, um, and small towns. Because the way a question is asked may well a- affect the opinion that's given. So we've, we, um, we like to copy someone on, on the town side on any request, even when there's, um, a retainer. Because we want you to know, so the building inspector has reached, if the building inspector is authorized, for example, to reach out. We want you to know the building inspector has, and so a town administrator might look at that and say, whoa, whoa, whoa. We, we need to talk to the zoning chair as well, this isn't really what they asked for. Um, so we believe it's important for you to be kept informed of the requests that we have. And for us to understand what the actual facts are before we respond to something. Um, we can give opinions lickety-split, I mean, if you wanted to talk to me about charter amendments or, you know, the mask man, whatever, pick it up. I can talk about it, but I'm not going to give you an opinion that you want to rely on. Unless I know what the facts are to support, you know, to support my legal opinion. Um, and so, you know, that's something that we work hard at in every one of our, uh, emails and letters on any topic. We will say, you have requested an opinion concerning whatever it might be. You've informed me of the following facts so that everyone knows what I know or what, you know, what we know. And then we'll give our legal opinion. But, um, it, it's, it's especially important when there are, um, potentially more than one person. That might be asking for questions, I mean, asking the same question or similar questions, that we answer it with the facts that are correct. Um, and so typically we won't answer, um, questions from, you know, several board members about the same thing. Um, are, we usually suggest that the board has an access to council policy, I don't know if you already have that. Um, and the reason is because there are times when, um, it's actually more efficient not to call a town council. That it is to call a town council. There are things that come to us, especially in smaller towns, that really aren't legal questions at all. Um, and that can very much be answered by, you know, staff in the, in the building. And, um, and so, you know, we, we, um. We want to be consistent, it doesn't matter who asked the question, if the question is the same. And whether the board likes our answer or doesn't like our answer, you know, or the building inspector or the planning board, whatever it is. We can only give the answer that we have and that's, that doesn't depend on who asks it, that depends on what the facts are. So, um, you know, again, this is. Sorry.
I, I'm just, those answers, because it's something that Mr. Wingo brought up to, um, another interviewer. So those answers are generally, are they in writing or are they on the phone? Um, uh, how do you, how do you, uh?
That is always your choice, um, you know, we, if you ask for an email, you're going to get an email back. If you ask for a letter, we're going to send you a letter. If you call and you say, I, you know, I've been, uh. I'm the one who's working on X, Y, or Z and I have a meeting with board X in twenty minutes, we're going to have a conversation. And then if you want me to follow up with an, an email to confirm what we talked about, that is what will happen. Um, you know, and, and I'm never upset to put our opinions in writing with all of the reasoning and rationale. Because, you know, I think that really shows how, um, fair we are, um, in terms of. It doesn't, you know, just because some person was our appointing authority or because, you know, we, you know. Both drove the same car to town meeting one time and wound up saying, oh, we have a, you know, a shared interest in this kind of car or whatever. That doesn't affect the work that we do. The work that we do is not based on our feelings about people or about what's being, trying to be accomplished. It's about what the law says when applied to the facts and then how you all want to deal with that is your choice. And if you want to do it, we're going to support that, you know, we'll do what we need to support it. If you decide no, same thing.
All right, so would you be charged, or if you asked me to put it right, would you be charging for that?
So things that would be within the retainer, if you're doing a retainer, would be covered within the retainer and things that were outside. and things that were outside would be outside. So for example, if it was a litigation status, um, on a particular case and we were asked to come to a select board's meeting or something, you know, where we, the, the writing of that report would be no charge. We don't charge for, um, litigation status reports. However, um, if, when we, when, during that meeting, you suggested that, or you requested that we do X, Y, or Z, that X, Y, or Z thing would be outside of the retainer and it would be charged for.
Okay. I have just have one more question and I'll, I'll let the other, I'm sorry for monopolizing this.
No, certainly.
So you, so, uh, so you, you've been doing this for 2000, since 2013, right?
Well, no, I've been, I've been, uh, at, at KP Law since the year 2000. I came immediately after the Y2K debacle was resolved and I've been there ever since. So I've been the president and the, the managing attorney since 2013.
So, um, uh, as you know, we have an attorney on the select board. You're aware of that. Have you ever been involved in, in any litigation business or he was representing the plaintiff or the defendant?
Not that I'm aware of as me, but what we would do is we run a conflict check, which we always do. And then we'd have to see what comes up and how to deal with it. So, um, you know, that would be before we open matter one, that's something that we would look at.
Great. Thank you, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm still listening to you. I just got to plug it in.
Certainly, no problem.
Anybody else has any questions?
I think that answered.
Want to ask her to the member of the municipal? If we ask everybody else? What's it called? Municipal law. Are you a member of the municipal?
Lawyers Association.
Lawyers Association.
Yes, I am.
I'm wondering, as an attorney, how do you deal with clients whose maybe intellect is a little bit below average and, you know, they seem to be a blowhard all the time? And how, how do you communicate your legal advice to someone like that's difficult to get through to?
You know, I, I think every person is different and the way that we wind up dealing with a particular individual who's difficult, you know, for, because either that's just, you know, that's the way they like to roll. Or because they have a particular issue they're unhappy about. It really depends. We have boards, we have some boards where the board, the entire board are like that. They just really don't want our advice and, um, you know, they prefer to do things that they want to do their way and they don't want to, you know, to, to be told about, you know, the open meeting law, public records, conflict interest law, for example. And, you know, our job is to be the town attorney. And so, you know, we figure out a way to have the conversation. And ultimately, I, I think we reach a grudging respect, um, with, with, you know, people who are, um, having an issue either with us, um, or individuals or, you know, something that's going on there. Because, um, you know, again, our job is to just tell you, this is the way the law applies. And if you want to take it like I'm, it's a personal attack, I can promise you, it's not. This is what the law says. I would say that I use my, um, I have a line where I say, you know, I didn't write the law. If you have a problem, you need to go talk to your state rep and state, um, your state senator. And I think that really does kind of explain where, where are carriers of a message? And that's what we will do. And it doesn't mean that the message has to be well received.
Would you, uh, would you want to know if a current select board member has ever filed a complaint with a bar or the attorney general against another attorney?
I would never ask that question.
Would you want to know?
There is on the Board of Bar Overseers website, there is a place to look up if complaints have been filed. And, um, that's, that's where a person would look. But no, I don't, um, I don't do that. No, and there are several communities where there's lawyers on the board or where the board has been sued. But that's not my, by a member, but that's, no, we, we just don't do that. A matter of professional courtesy, I would say. It's, you know, um, every situation is different and I choose to, you know, to give people the benefit of the doubt. You know, just because they might have thought someone else, you know, egregiously violated the rules of professional conduct, doesn't mean that they would necessarily come to that conclusion about me. And, and if I could just add one more comment to that, I, I think another aspect of what makes us the KP Law work as town council is that we don't want, if, if a person is angry or upset about a decision or, um, you know, a, um, a statement or an opinion or any of that, we would much rather talk about it. You know, if the town doesn't feel that we're, um, making decisions based on the right information, whether that's a single member of a select board or a select board or, um, you know, a building inspector or a town administrator, we're going to listen to that. You know, we would much prefer to have a conversation. Okay, what did you think was, went wrong or went sideways with that and why? And, you know, sometimes I think it's clear that it's because, and you know, this happens, right? Where we didn't get the right information, even though we asked for it or we didn't know to ask for it and no one gave it to us. Or we misunderstood, you know, we misunderstood the facts. And so, you know, something else, um, you know, a, a different and important fact mattered. We're not, we're not embarrassed or defensive about you all bringing something to our attention that you think is important. And that's like in any relationship, if it simmers, if it sits there and it goes on and on, then everything is something to blow up about as compared to, let's have a reasonable conversation about what the problem is. And, you know, I, I work with many town managers and administrators and I encourage them to give me feedback, not only about the things that they, about the towns where I'm the lead, but where other, um, you know, where other peoples at, other people at the firm are their leads or the people that they're working with most frequently. We, we believe in feedback and we believe in relationships and that it's, that's part of this job for us. It's figuring out how do we come in, especially when it's, you know, brand new, a place we don't know and, you know, serve the town. And so, you know, that's all part of it, in my opinion.
Right. So I'm going to open that up. More of the questions on the board and open it up to the public. Anybody in the public have, have a question? Anybody, anybody in public have a question? Okay, I guess not. So, thank you, thank you very much for, for attending.
Yes, thank you for having me. And regardless of what happens, it's nice to see you all. And hopefully next time I see you, it will be without masks. So fingers crossed, be well. Thanks again.
So, um, I would like to get a list of, of, of what services this last interviewer says they will do for the retainer that the town has voted for. So that we can, uh, there are apples to apples. Who's that speaking?
Hey, Steve, under, um, Mr. Pollard, we have more lawsuits than we ever had. What is that going to cost the town? And last year, you say he was paid $24,500. Is that all he was paid?
So, so lawyers, well, generally, I was about to say lawyers don't create lawsuits, but actually that's not true.
Well, no, because if you have somebody who is proficient and articulate and comprehensive and preventative, as this very articulate woman just told us, who's also transparent, you don't have these types of lawsuits because maybe they could be avoided if people are being guided properly as well as open dialogue and open conversation and transparency. So people don't have to feel that they need to sue. So what is it going to cost us to have a lawyer that is not preventative?
So I understand where you're coming from. However, the current lawsuits that are going on have nothing to do with town council. As a matter of fact, um, uh, I think there was some admirable, uh,
Sure they do.
Efforts, okay. We have a different name of opinion, um, but there were some efforts from a town council to not, to, to settle these things. But unfortunately, um, it's sometimes, uh, things don't get settled. So, uh, you know, that's, but, but again, in, in general, um, it has, doesn't have to do with any town council. The Great Barrington has many more lawsuits than we do. You have other towns, uh, including Thamesfield that are, that are on the precipice of, of having some real problems and that really, and, and both of them are, are contracting with, with KP Law. So, um, it's not, it does not, there's not a, uh, causation. There may be a correlation, but there's no causation. But I appreciate your, your interest.
I think the money is a red herring. The money argument is a red herring. I mean, the town pays $30,000 to pick weeds out of a lake by hand. You know, arguing if she, if they need, a good council is worth every penny. I mean, they're within $10 of their founder. I mean, Jeremiah's at 180. I mean, they're within the range of reasonableness. She said she'd work with us. We need to get more money. You get more money at the special town meetings.
Thing to do is to get a list up. She said she would provide us a list of what their services will do for their, for, for the retainer that the people, that the people of Monterey voted for, um, uh, vote, I mean, voted into the budget. And that's, and that's what it is. I mean, unfortunately, that's, that's the way we, uh, that's the way we operate here in, in Monterey and have, and I've done so in the past. It doesn't prove anything. I, I, I'm curious, I'd love to see what, what we can get for, for that amount. We may be able to, we may get more than, than, than the other two applicants. But, uh, but we'll, we don't know unless we, unless we ask.
It's not a matter of getting, it's the quality of the services that they're providing. It's the, they're the experts in the field. It's not like you're hiring a, a car dealer. You want to get, save money on a car. That's not the purpose of hiring, you know, expert legal counsel. It's the quality of their services, their expertise.
It is our job, um, uh, to, to, to spend the, the funds that.
Your presentation was so articulate, comprehensive, detailed. I, I was blown away by her.
Melissa, please mute the, please mute the participants because, uh, we're done with the public speaking portion of our meeting. Thank you. So I, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to get that. We have a meeting on September 1st and then we can, we can have it, we can make a decision at that point, get, get the information too. I also, I also am interested in, in, uh, since people are throwing around public records requests. Uh, I'd love, I'd love to get a, uh, emails that, uh, for transparency that went, that went on between KP and, uh, um, members of the select board that have been communicating with them. Why?
What point does? If they haven't been, I will forward, there was one or two emails.
They're in here.
And then there's the emails that I, yeah, I'll send them to you. I think the benefits of, you know, we had three people, three different people that we spoke to tonight, uh, with, always, you know, different, bring something different to the table. It's hard to weigh every single pro and con of each person, but I felt that KP Law and Lauren's presentation and how she answered questions would be a great service for Monterey. Having specialists in things like the Labor and Employment Department, who would be our primary contact is something I think we could really benefit from. There are some people who make very technical, uh, requests and questions of the select board and of our town government. And I think KP is suited well to answer those kinds of questions, having experts in different fields. I'm not worried frankly about exactly, uh, you know, what's little thing is going to be in the retainer or not. I think it sounds like they'll be reasonable. And I don't think there's any reason we need to further discuss this. Our lawyer and costs, our litigation costs went over last year. We simply transferred after May 1st funds from different accounts to cover it. It happens, look, it is in a tough situation where we have appropriated funds, but, uh, we can make it happen. And so for those reasons, I motioned to appoint KP Law as our town council.
I'll second that motion.
And prior to vote, vote, I will, um, I will say this for, for the record. It is my understanding and belief that, um, the legal fees, um, that, that KP will, will charge this town. We want to far exceed what the town has raised and appropriated for legal fees and will continue to do so. Uh, I, I, I think that the current council has operated, uh, in good times and bad with this town. Has hung in when things were going great and when things were going really awful. And, and, and he was, and, and I, we need to contact this, the one individual. We got, we got the, we got the, the one individual. The idea that you have three different people sounds great. But, uh, but you heard it from their, the fellow who started the firm, where, um, there were folks that just couldn't, could not get an answer. And he said that happened two years ago. So obviously they've been here, this managing director's been there longer than two years. So, so you had, you heard it, you didn't hear it from me, you heard it from an actual attorney who said the other town was, now, the other town was dissatisfied because they couldn't get their answers. I believe that a large, that, that, that they will be unable to, uh, that there'll be more of a chance that we're not going to be able to, to, to get, to get their opinions. You know, it's one thing having great, uh, resources, but if you can't access them, then it's, it's not as good as, as anything else. But the most, but the most important thing is this, is, is there seems to be, this is, again, go through the entire history of Monterey, we're exponentially, um, of rising in, in, in lawsuits for one reason or another, okay? Got people that decided they cannot serve, they cannot solve their problems without, without, without lawsuits. Okay? And the only way, once you get sued, you have to defend yourself. Okay, which we have to go to your, to the town attorney, right? These guys are going to be much more expensive by maybe a factor of three. Um, and I'm concerned and I'm concerned about that. Uh, and I'm telling you that, that, uh, that if, if that's the case, we'll know by, by the next town meeting. So if, if that, you know, I mean, we'll, we'll know concretely. Either paying $17,000 or we have to go ahead and get a transfer so that we're paying us $50,000, $60,000 bills. And I'm telling you that if, uh, if, if you take these votes and that happens, I'm going to, I will, I will pin it on people at this table. Now, he doesn't, you can, but.
No, you can, you know, you can point the, I will advocate for KP Law. And like I said, I just think there's a lot of benefits, uh, to that firm. And I think it's, you know, a small, if, you know, I think they will be reasonable. I don't think they would have as many clients as they do if they weren't, you know, reasonably priced. And, um, I think it's going to be worth it. I think there's a lot of value there and I want to do what's, what's best for the town. Tax money is always a, is always a consideration, but it's not ever my only consideration. And I feel strongly that KP Law would be a huge, huge benefit to the town, huge service. And, um, and that's my opinion.
Someone's got to call the vote. Those in favor?
We're down with this, are we down with discussion?
I'm down, I'm, I'm down with discussion.
I'm down.
All those in favor of appointing KP Law as the new town council? I vote yes.
Yes.
I vote no.
I'll assign my name to this one, so there's no mistake on the record.
Wouldn't be a. What is, uh, what is it, what is the board's opinion of the existing cases?
Well, it's certainly a discussion that needs to be had. And I know one of, one of the answers that I was impressed that Lauren gave and Leonard Copelman also gave a, a good answer about the two different choices that we have about ongoing litigation. I thought Lauren's answer was also, was also great and that they'll consider, you know, a number of factors like how far we are in litigation. And so I think that's a, certainly a conversation to be had, uh, moving forward about, we have two ongoing litigation and whether, whether or not we'll. litigation and whether, whether or not we'll, and they said they're willing to work, you know, so it sounds like we have options, which is good. And that's certainly a conversation to be had.
All right, a conversation will be had. I make a motion to adjourn.
Next second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I actually going, can I take a copy of that email you referred to, John, that said that we all had a meeting together?
No, it's right here. Jeremiah's input in the matter, you said not applicable. It was in an email. Jeremiah put his input in a meeting about the matter.
With regard to the Terry.
Correct.
But you said you had a copy of that.
Well, I thought it was in here, but it's, it's an email that you sent to the, I, I saw it in an email.
Okay, so can you push?